Just a moment. Okay, the Washington County Commissioners Court is now in session Tuesday, April 21st, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. Commissioner Kestner, would you give the indication, please?
Yes. Thank you, God, for keeping us safe during these terrible times. And God bless all those families that have lost loved ones and have people who are sick from this dreadful virus. Please help us have a good and a good meeting today. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Please join me in a pledge to the flag of our great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. I pledge to the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God and one indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number three on our agenda, discuss and act upon the approval of a proclamation proclaiming the month of April 2020 as sexual assault awareness.
You're muted, Judge. Judge, you're muted. Hi, you can't mute people.
Joy, did you do something different with your hair?
Yeah, I just stuck it up.
It looks good.
Thank you. I need a haircut, so I had to put it up. How are you feeling?
Good. I just can't shake this stupid cough, but I know it's the allergies because I ended up having two days full of just back-to-back sneezing. It's just every time something blows in.
Yeah. You know, it's allergies when it's sneezing, your eyes are watering and stuff like that. You know, that's what it is.
Yeah, exactly.
Can y'all hear me?
We can hear you, TJ.
Hey, looks like we're having a little technical difficulty, but we're back in business.
Lights, camera, action.
Can you see my face again? Now we're ready to roll. Okay.
All right.
Number three, the proclamation, discuss and act upon the approval of proclamation proclaiming the monthly, the month of April 2020 as sexual assault awareness and prevention month. Commissioners, y'all all have this proclamation before you. I'm going to read the last part of it. Now, therefore, as the Commissioners' Court of Washington County, to hereby designate April 2020 as sexual assault awareness and prevention month in Washington County.
I make a motion to approve this proclamation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Fox, seconded by Commissioner Hannaf. Any further discussion?
Well, I just want to say, I know that we have people out there that are working with these people that go through these violent things, sexual assaults and stuff, and I just appreciate all those that work with them and try to help them out as they're making through this time. And I understand that there's more assaults and things as we're going through this unforeseen time of the virus, of the Corona. And like I said, I just pray for everybody out there that goes through any kind of violence at home and pray that everybody can just make it through all these things and thank the people that work with them.
I want to say, sexual violence is a terrible thing. And I just wish that people would wake up and not be doing that stuff. Someday, you just got to pray about things like that. And hopefully, someday, we won't have that. But, you know, that's hard to say. But anyhow, I just wanted to say that it's a terrible thing.
I'll echo what Commissioner Fox said. Just God bless all the people out there helping those that have been sexually assaulted. And like she mentioned, it's unfortunate, and I pray that even though we know the reality of is that, you know, there's probably more of this stuff going on due to the Corona virus, but we're praying for all of you. And again, you know, this proclamation is again to bring awareness and show our support for the community that helps those that are in need.
Yeah, I would just say that the worst thing for this is silence. So if anyone out there is having this kind of, is in this kind of situation, I would say, reach out to those who can help you. There are many places that are out there that are willing to help. And these organizations are there to protect you and help you get through that situation. And not only that, to get away from the situation that you're in. So God bless all of these folks and all those that are willing to help. So I know a lot of that stuff is volunteerism. And it's just amazing to see how many people are involved in that in our community. And I just want to say, I appreciate all of that work.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioners. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item number four on our agenda, discuss and act upon the approval of a resolution for the Texas Historic Courthouse Preservation Program Grant Application. Resolution reads as follows, whereas Washington County recognizes the importance of the historic courthouse and its unique relationship to the community, and Washington County recognizes the need to preserve the historic courthouse, and whereas Washington County updated a master plan for the historic courthouse as part of the requirements for participation in the Texas Historical Commission's Texas Historic Courthouse Preservation Program, and Washington County adopts the updated master plan for use in the ongoing preservation of the courthouse. And the courthouse is in need of critical repairs and restoration. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Washington County Commissioners' Court of Washington County, Texas, as the owner, does hereby support efforts to secure funding under the Texas Historic Courthouse Preservation Program Grant Application and commitments made therein for preservation and restoration of the courthouse. Comments?
Okay, I'll bring this up because we've been working on this for a couple of years. We hired a firm called Architectses to do our courthouse, the long-range preservation grant and things. And they have sent their long-range plan to the historical commission, and they have approved the long-range plan. So now the next step is going forth to try to see if we can get some monies that are allocated by the legislature. Mr. Stanley Graves from Architectses has been in contact with us, and the judge asked me to kind of hit this up with Commissioner Kestner. And so we've got a actual, working on the grant. It's due like in two or three weeks. And we're getting letters from people that are supporting us, people that are prominent in the community, and legislators and senators and things like that. So it's something that we need. We know the outside of the courthouse is in dire need of help, and we're hoping at least to maybe get that through this grant to get that part done. And then we can move forward after that. Any questions?
No, I just, I thank y'all for all the effort that y'all have put in this. I mean, preserving our history and our infrastructure is so important, not just for those that will get to enjoy it shortly after it's done, but I mean, years and years down the road. You know, our grandkids and our kids, grandkids, and so forth. So thank you all. This is a really important project.
Yeah, yes. I'd say it's a very important project. I don't know if this will help us get this fixed or not. We don't even have hot water in the courthouse, in any place that I know of. But
The kitchen does.
That stuff's all, okay, most places don't, because the piping is all bad in the walls. And all that, I don't know if that'll be addressed at this time, but at least I know the outside is in terrible shape. It needs a lot of repair done. So I'm looking forward to hopefully that we can get this done. It'd be great for the county.
Well, I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the submittal of a 2020 Texas Capital Fund Grant, no, I'm sorry, for the Texas Historic Courthouse Preservation Program Grant Application.
I second that motion. Motion made by Commissioner Fox, seconded by Commissioner Kestner to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank y'all. Hopefully, we'll get this done.
Thanks for all the work you're doing on that, Commissioner. That's for sure. It's a big job.
Thank you, Joyce. Hard work. I know you did a lot more than I have, but I'm here to help you.
Well, it's kind of like wanting to have to get all the paperwork together. So it's hard to get more than one person doing all that stuff. So it's good. It's all good.
Okay, moving along. Item number five, discuss and act upon the approval of a resolution authorizing the submittal of a 2020 Texas Capital Fund Grant Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture. Ms. Cates, I know you're on the call today. Would you like to elaborate on this, please?
Certainly. This is, we've had several meetings where we have discussed the application for the Texas Capital Fund, which would allow the construction of additional gas system infrastructure to feed the site proposed for Project Silver Crayon. This is the next step in that process, is a resolution authorizing the submittal of this grant application to the Texas Department of Agriculture. And that is the item number five on your agenda. I'm going to go ahead and address item number six. Item number six is the company contractor agreement between the county and the subject business that is codenamed Project Silver Crayon, because this is still a competitive project, and authorizing the county judge to execute the agreement. I will note that we had one update on this yesterday. You will note that there was in that, in the executive summary that was included with your agenda, discussion of the amount to be paid to Trailer and Associates for the application fee. Because of the volatility of our economy right now, and that things are kind of shifting and moving, Trailer and Associates has very generously extended an offer to the county that, hang on, we're starting my video now, that not only will that fee not be due until the award is granted by the Department of Agriculture, but even that fee for the application would not be due unless Washington County accepts the grant award. And so that does give us some security that the county will not be out any funds unless the project actually begins construction on this gas infrastructure to secure this project.
And that would also be rolled up into the grant, correct, Ms. Cates?
The application fee cannot be. The application
Not the fee, but the total?
Right, right. The only thing that the administration of the grant can be part of the grant. So the fee that Trailer and Associates charges to administer the grant, once it's awarded, is part of one of the costs of the grant that is funded through the grant proceeds. The only piece of it that would not be then is the actual application fee. So just to clarify, and if there are any questions, Mr. Trailer is also on the call with us today. So if we have any questions, either he can fill those questions, or I can.
Well, just real quick, I'll just jump in because, you know, I've been more intimately involved with this project with you, Ms. Cates. And I just want to thank you for all the hard work, and especially for the last development that you just spoke about in contacting Trailer and Associates and negotiating this, and also for their understanding. Mr. Trailer, I want to thank you as well. So I just wanted to make sure, because Susan, you've done a wonderful job representing Washington County, and you've literally been beating the pavement for over the last year. And we're finally, you know, getting closer to the finish line. So, thank you.
Had extensive conversation yesterday with the company, and obviously, they're in the oil and gas industry, and that was our concern, that was there any, you know, possible hiccups in the project. And while they are cautious at this point because of the volatility of the market, they are cautiously optimistic. And so at this point, we are recommending that we move forward with this project as, you know, keep heading down this path, knowing that we still have some time in this if there are adjustments that need to be made. But making sure that Washington County assets are protected was vitally important to this conversation. And I think that we have been able to do that.
And I would just like to say, on that, to dovetail off of that, in reading this document, there are concerns about, there is a provision that you have to have 51% low to moderate income as employees, as a penalty for that. If that's not followed, the entire grant would have to be paid back. And we are going to have to, as a county, make certain that if Project Crayon goes through, and they are hiring these people, that they hire 51% low to moderate income. And they're going to have to monitor that according to this document. I would say that suggestions that have been put into the document that are for the agreement, in terms of how to recoup that money, be put into the agreement so that Washington County is ensured that they are not out of these funds, if there is something that does happen to go wrong. We always plan for the worst and hope for the best. But in order to protect the taxpayers, I think we need to follow this guideline.
Mr. Trailer, would you like to step in and address that? I believe that the actual agreement does, the agreement between the county and the company that is codenamed Project Silver Crayon does protect the county. It is, it's basically a clawback to the business that would protect the county in that circumstance. Are you still with us, Mr. Trailer?
Hmm. He was here a while ago.
Yeah, he was there earlier.
He's here. His audio's not working.
Oh, okay. Gary, you're muted. Gary. Gary, he's talking.
Am I still muted?
Oh, there you are.
Now.
They can hear you.
Okay, very good. It's a pleasure to speak with you this morning. All this technology is a little bit new, so bear with me. The question that Commissioner Hannaf referred to about the need to protect the county in the event of a breach of the agreement with respect to the hiring of low and moderate income people, that is a very perceptive statement, and it's a very important part of this project. And there is a requirement in the agreement that would be executed between the county and the business, that before funds are obligated, that would be paid from any grant funds, that the company would be required to furnish the county with an acceptable security document in the amount of 100% of the amount of the grant. Typically, the type of document that's used for that is an indemnity bond. Of course, this company is very familiar with those bonds, and they use them in the delivery of their products worldwide. So I have discussed this requirement with the president of the company, and he does not see there would be any problem. But the satisfaction, as it relates to the form of security, will rest with the county, and certainly will get the county attorney involved in that at the appropriate time, so that you all can be completely, I think, protected against ever having to use general revenue to repay funds associated with failure to meet this low and moderate income requirement.
That sounds good.
Thank you very much for that explanation.
Definitely. Thank y'all. You bet.
I've got another, I've got a question as well. On this, with getting the grant and stuff, and the $27,000 application fee, okay, say we get the grant, we get it approved and everything. Well, then comes down the road, because of the volatile work environment, because of all the oil prices, that Project Crayon decides not to come here. We have the grant. Can the grant be turned back into the state? Or, I mean, or will the city just use that money to build the gas? Or what will happen with that money then?
Yes, that's a great question. The way that this is actually going to be set up logistically is that, once this grant's been approved and accepted by the county, there will be an ability to actually draw grant funds. But prior to the approval of any draws that are submitted by Washington County, there are a number of special conditions that have to be satisfied, that document the fact that they are going forward. Let me give you one example of that. One example is that the state will not release money for the payment of construction costs for the proposed construction of gas line improvements until the company that would benefit from those improvements has actually started construction on their plant facility. So there are some ways that, and then in the event that it becomes apparent that the company is not going to be able to go forward with its project, then at that time, we would seek to have the state voluntarily, of course, with your mutual agreement, terminate the grant contract. And those funds would then become available for use by the Texas Department of Agriculture for other projects.
Okay. Thank you. I just like, so just things in your head that you think about. So just wanted
Oh, no, absolutely. You bet. It's a pleasure to speak with y'all this morning.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We have the resolution before us. Is there any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the resolution, oh, wait, sorry, the resolution authorizing the submittal of a 2020 Texas Capital Fund Grant Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture.
I'll second that. I'll second the motion.
Motion was made by Commissioner Bullock and seconded by Commissioner Hannaf. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number six, discuss and act upon approving, let's see, get my notes a little closer to me here, discuss and act upon approving a company contractor agreement with Project Silver Crayon outlining the responsibilities of each party to the county's 2020 Texas Capital Fund Grant, authorize the county judge to execute the actual agreement.
I make a motion to approve the company contract agreement with Project Silver Crayon outlining the responsibilities of each party to the county's 2020 Texas Capital Fund Grant, and authorize the county judge to execute the actual agreement.
I second that motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item number seven, discuss and act upon the monthly report. Is there someone on the call to give the shirts?
Good morning, Judge. Can you hear me? This is Jay, P. Trash.
Hey, Jay, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Jay.
Morning, everybody. We're kind of getting used to this talking on the iPhone like this. But no, just a pretty standard report. I'll make it quick. Unless there's any questions, we can move on. I know y'all have other business to deal with. I don't have any other besides a pretty standard report for everybody.
Jay, is there anything in particular that you want to bring our attention to?
Not really. I think everybody's aware, you know, the family violence, we're certainly starting to see the uptick of that from last month, March, and it's still going on into April. We're still having calls. Everybody's getting restless. We're starting to see more movement now. The governor made his announcement. So we're just continually preparing for that to see how it's going to go. We're still working with the jail, making sure everything's fine. We're still having to transport prisoners from hotspots, but we've worked well with EMS to test some of them that say come from hotspot jails, to get them tested and see if they make sure they don't have the virus and stuff. So that's kind of where we're standing at right now.
Jay, I know that I got an email from tax saying they're going to send some PPEs to the sheriffs in the different counties. Have y'all received those already?
No, ma'am, not yet, Commissioner. We're still waiting on it. I saw the email and the letter. We have still not gotten them. I know that right now, we're kind of getting down to our last mass since the orders we had placed like in February, when we kind of see this coming, getting repaired. It was all, most of those orders have been placed on back order because of FEMA and the Federals kind of got them first. So it'd be
Well, this is above and beyond, isn't it? This is stuff the tax is allocated, I think.
Yes, we're just still waiting on it. We still haven't received it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right. Well, Jay, thank you for the report. We do need to vote on this, and there is a donation involved.
I would remind everybody, Judge, we still have the 300 gallons of concentrate bleach. We've been talking to Bobby and all that, that the city gave us. We still have it. If anybody needs one in the county, we'd be more than happy to fill them up.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, that was a nice donation by the company making that bleach. It was very nice of them to do. And they transported it here free of charge.
Yes, sir.
Right. Okay, we need a motion to Okay, we need a motion to, to approve the sheriff's office monthly.
I make a, accept the sheriff's monthly report.
I second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Hanif, seconded by Commissioner Kestner. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Jay.
Thank you Judge, Commissioners. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
You too.
Item number seven, discuss and act upon the Emergency Medical Services Monthly Report. Mr. Dramus? Uh, Mr. Dramus, are you on the call? Are you on the meeting?
I am, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we do now, okay.
We can hear you now.
Good morning Kevin.
Got to hit, got to hit the mute button. Good morning you guys. Um, Jerry, I'm going to grab the screen if that's okay and just it'd be easier for me to flow through, so. Share screen. Are y'all looking at my monthly report now? Just to confirm?
Got it.
Okay, perfect. I'll be quick and brief. It looks like you have a busy agenda, um, but there's a few things on here that we've added that I might want to just point out. So, normal operational call, that's, that's up 15%. I'm looking at page two, um, but that's not real alarming either. It's 15% compared to the last March, um, and maybe the line, the green line steady up is a little alarming. Hopefully that starts to steady out. Um, I will say probably about 10% of that is COVID related. Last month I reported that our volume was pretty steady, uh, and we have a chart on here showing some of that too, so I'll get to that in just a minute. Um, this is about normal, usually it's 25, 75, um, call origination from in the county or in the city, so nothing really crazy there. Um, these numbers are pretty much identical to last month. This is a COVID-19 just summary of the patient load and these are actual transports. Um, and to be honest with you, the, um, all of these numbers really by now have probably ended up positive. So what we, what we originally do is we kind of triage these into highly suspected, high risk, or confirmed positive. And you can see the green, um, the light green circles are the confirmed positive, but pretty much probably 90% of these turn positive over time. So these were highly suspected COVID type patient transports. Uh, the only thing I would add to that is we, um, have been extremely disciplined on the PPE to make sure that we're not contaminating other patients because with this many transports, that means every one of our ambulances transported COVID patients. So, um, the discipline and the diligence to make sure that we're deconning everything to a T, um, has taken quite a bit of work. And, and one of the things that we wanted to make sure of is that it didn't slow us down efficiency wise. Um, so we've really been trying to track and you'll see, um, our shoot times and response times because when you leave the gate now, you're leaving the gate different than you did two months ago. Um, talking PPE wise and the way that the guys are outfitting. And then the in-between, the downtime in-between calls is certainly longer as well, just to get it contaminated, decontaminated. So the great news is, and I'm knocking on wood, the great news is we have not had, um, any positive, um, tests of our staff in-house and we've tested about seven staff members now. Um, none of them were symptomatic, just, um, whether they were nervous about it because early on, people were nervous when we were transporting them. They've gotten, unfortunately, they've gotten pretty accustomed to it now. So I'm going to pause for a minute, make sure there's no questions on that slide.
I'm glad to hear that, that nobody's tested positive with your guys and tell them all we want them to be safe out there.
Yep, that's the goal for sure. Okay, I'm going to move down. And these, these. Sorry, sorry Mr. Kestner.
Uh, I just wanted to say that y'all are doing a great job and I mean, with the circumstances you have, it's, I take my hat off to you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you know, you're just one mistake away from some, something unfortunate. So, um, Justin's been really good about a daily call, just like we have a kind of a government call for the officials. We have a, a daily briefing of just a reminder and physically going through the PPE and just anything we can do to increase that and, and kind of adjust on the fly, we're doing that. So it's not perfect, but, um, so far, so good. So, the jail breakdown, um, that's the 2018 slide, you saw that last month, that's just a reminder. And then the 2019 year, um, we're really looking at March right here is what we're really paying attention to because that's what we're comparing to for this month, the March monthly report. And then if you move down here, this was March, um, for 2020. And remember, these yellows are, are unrelated to jail really, that's DWI blood draw, so some years are busy, some years are not, so. Um, but nothing real, um, exciting there. It has slowed down, um, the last few days, I would say, and I know Dr. Yoffe's been over there in the jail some, so that's probably related to some of that as well. Um, but we'll see what that looks like after a full month. I'm going to skip down. So we've had a placeholder for the aviation division for a couple of months and really didn't put much into it. I've been telling the staff, just keep the spot there because the time is coming when we're going to really need to report a bunch of stuff and that time has come. So I, I put it into three buckets and this bowl right under here is kind of the bucket just for general operations. There's some things here that you can read through and if you have questions, we can try to answer them. A ton of work in the last 45 days is really what this is showing. Um, and then the next bucket is clinical operations, which is all the clinical stuff. Um, it, COVID could not have happened at a worse time for this project, um, but the ability to adjust and do things through virtual probably helped us some, if I'm being honest. Um, we didn't have to send eight people to California to go to the clinical academy. We did some of it through Zoom. We flew some of their staff here and did it here in our offices, so, but we have worked through the, um, onboarding, the hiring process, the Reach Academy, the clinical orientation, the aviation orientation. Um, they are drinking from a fire hose is what this means right now. Um, and then on the, on the actual flight and aviation side, that's really the focus of this week for us. The pilots have been about a three-week focus point, so all the pilots have been, um, qualified, check ride, been through their process for training. They've got a couple nighttime NVG flights that they still have to do, so they're still flying a lot at night. Um, and those are local flights, you'll see them out and about, um, around the county for the most part. Um, but this week is more concentrated on the crew side or the clinical side of getting their aviation flights done. So currently they're doing hot offs, which is just loading, unloading, um, NVG operations, all that stuff that allows them to go live. And then our, our current, um, plan is to go live next Monday. That could be pushed, there's a couple of things we're waiting on, um, and one of them is a provider license with Department of State Health Services. Um, they're working hard to get that done. Um, some of you guys, I've reached out to you about, um, maybe some phone calls that we might need to make and I, I don't think we're at that point. I think that they're doing everything they can do. Um, clearly DSHS is busy right now, um, as the lead agency for the state of Texas with COVID. So, um, we're expecting some delays there and honestly, I don't know that there is a delay. They may have actually sped it up for us, so, um, they may deserve a pat on the back instead of a call because they're working hard to help us get that license out. I'll pause for a minute, that's a lot to take in. So any questions or comments or concerns?
Kevin, you mentioned, um, that y'all were waiting, um, for the state. Have they already communicated to you that, I mean, things are going smoothly? It's just a matter of them processing all of the, the proper paperwork?
Yep, good, good question. Uh, I probably should have elaborated on that. So we did, yes, to answer your question in short, we did a virtual state inspection, which was I guess the second one ever done in the state, um, through FaceTime. Literally I walked around with a DSHS investigator in my hand. Um, and we, that was about a three-hour inspection that we did last week, Wednesday I believe, um, in pass. So really we're state inspected and qualified, it's just getting the application out of the system at this point.
Okay. I assumed that was probably the case, but I just, I wanted to verify.
Right.
So that's great news. Great news for the community.
Yeah, we're getting there. Um, so I'm going to quickly go forward and then you've got shoot times here, which you can see that's hovering right where we want to be. That took quite a bit of work. It, it looks more like a NASCAR event when we're taking off now than ever before of just the guys getting appropriate PPE done and, and really trying to work through that process without having any breaches of PPE. Um, response times all look good, I'm quickly going through these, but all of them were under eight and a half minutes, um, in every district, which is, actually that's really good. Sometimes there's one or two districts that we had to pull from that crossed the 10-minute response time or whatnot, so that's good. Transfer's are right where we want them to be, nothing really crazy there and that includes all COVID patients. So, um, the local community hospital and healthcare is doing a pretty good job of keeping these patients where they need to be is what that means. We don't have a big spike there. Um, this 6% infection control is probably, that used to not make the map, it was like less than 1%. So that's where some of those are being tracked from, so you see about 6% of our volume in that infection control type, um, category. Uh, and then the other thing, I'm going to skip and this is sideways, so you don't have to turn your heads, let me see if I can turn that, let's do that. Um, this is just the financial and the month really looked really good for financials. Um, honestly CMS, Medicare, um, some of the carriers have been really good about approving some of these, uh, C-19 transports that may not have otherwise been medically necessary, but in order to contain the virus, it was probably best to take them by ambulance. Um, so what I'm really saying is that Medicare really requires you to meet a criteria to be transported by ambulance before they pay. And right now they have, kind of give some exemptions because it might be better for us to take them back to a nursing home than to contaminate them and family members or whoever try to transport them. So we are doing a little bit more of that, but really Medicare's been good about paying for that, which has been a blessing. Um, and then the last thing, I'm going to see if I can just drag this to the bottom, um, is just to glance at the donations. So we had a, one large donation, um, and I'll bring it up so that you can quickly look at that and if there's comments on any of the donations, then I can elaborate. So that's the report. If you have questions or anything I need to scroll back to you because that's quick, um, I can go back to it, just let me know.
It is a very nice donation that, uh, the Red Oak folks put into your.
Oh yes.
Into your fund there. That's a.
Yes sir.
Very nice.
Yep, that was, um, probably a week before the, um, oil prices did what it did. So I have a feeling that was one of the last grants donations they'll do for, for any time in the near future. Yep.
Yeah, that was very community oriented of them, I appreciate them doing that. Um, Kevin, I just want to say that I know all the things you've got in here and going along with everything else you've been doing and keeping up with, and I know on the weekends you're constantly on, um, doing things and checking up with things on the COVID and things like that. So I just want to say thank you to all you and your crew for staying on top of these things, for being, and working with Brian to make sure we get the information because it's, it's very important that we get it because as people are calling us and buzzing, complaining, wanting to know more, uh, they need, you know, if we have to tell them, we need to understand the HIPAA violations and things, but just to know the numbers and things like that, we appreciate so much you're keeping up with all these things in, in the midst of all the aviation things. Like you said, the worst possible time for this virus to hit us too with the aviation coming on, so thank you all and, and all of your staff because like I said, I know they're out there doing y'all man's work, um, taking care of these people. Thank you.
Thanks Joy, thank you.
Yes, Kevin, I'll echo what Commissioner Fox said. Um, I just, I, I want to commend you for your leadership and, um, we're super thankful and very fortunate to have you, um, basically leading the county in, in our, uh, COVID mitigation efforts. So we thank you and, and I just want to make sure for all of you, um, that are, do not work for the, the county that are on this call, I just, I want all of you to know, uh, that we are in excellent hands.
Yes.
Yeah, Kevin, uh, again, I want to thank you personally because I listen to all your reports and everything you're doing. It takes a real strong person to be able to do what you're doing and I do appreciate that and God bless you and your family.
And also I want everyone to understand that Kevin initiated and put together the JEC, uh, Joint Information Committee, uh, and made that thing get up and hum and he says some very good committee members, but he still oversees that also while he's doing all the rest of this, this regular, normal list. Quite, quite the job given, thank you so much.
Thanks Judge.
I make a motion.
No, go ahead Joy, sorry.
I was going to make a motion to approve the EMS monthly report.
I'll second.
And thank the people for the donations.
Who was the second please? Who did the second?
I did. Commissioner Bullock.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Fox, seconded by Commissioner Bullock. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Kevin, did I interrupt you wanting to say something?
No ma'am, you're perfect. I was just going to make sure TJ had controls again. You're good.
Okay.
All right, thank you Kevin, appreciate it. E911.
Good morning, how are y'all?
Good morning.
So for the month of March, we had 7,111 calls, which is, um, it's pretty average even with our increase of adding blend, that's still a good, um, figure. And then for our calls on EMS times, we're at 27 seconds and fire times, we are at 51 seconds, uh, once again, still below our, uh, projected time to be out, so I'm really glad of that. I wanted to present y'all this month with two new things that 911's doing that we're really, really proud of and excited about. Motorola, uh, approached us a few months ago on some projects that they're putting together. Uh, one of the projects is, we are one of four, uh, agencies in, in the United States that's participating in this Alpha project, it's called, uh, Transcription Services. This is a new service that Motorola's putting together. It's in what they call an artificial intelligence software. Basically what it does is as calls are going on, it is transcribing word for word what's being said by the caller and the call taker, I mean, the call taker and the dispatcher, and it allows for immediate, uh, watching of what's being said so supervisor can pick up on key words and know what kind of call they have. And it could also be used later as a, as a transcription of a breakdown of a call if needed. So it is in place now in three 911 centers and we're the fourth one to test this out. Uh, so we are really excited about it, they'll start installing it this week and hopefully next week we'll start testing it out.
That's really exciting Christie, thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
It's really, really good, um, and so I'm looking forward to actually seeing what it can assist us with later on for, for calls and stuff. The, the second project I'm even, uh, more excited about, we're the only agency in, uh, the nation right now to test this out for Motorola. So what this is, is, um, it's where a piece of software is being put on, uh, to our texting. As you know, right now you can text 911, but you cannot send videos. And this is testing out, uh, videos that would allow videos to come into the center and we have the option, depending on the type of call, if we want to view it or not, send it to a supervisor to view, you know, depending on, like I said, what kind of call it is. Uh, there's strict security, um, software that's going in, that's going to protect, uh, you know, from malware and things like that, but, uh, one of the things that there, we're really moving forward to is to one day put this video into the hands of our EMS and police and let them have an insight before they even arrive into a scene of what's going on, of a live video or even a recorded video that we can get our hands on.
Absolutely.
That is also being installed now, so, uh, next week we'll begin with it and that's a really, really big project that I'm proud of for us to get Washington County's name out there and, and the 911 field as one of the first in the nation to test out this, this, uh, this project for Motorola, so.
That's exciting. You know, we're the first to, uh, um, text and 911, uh, in the nation too, so now we're the first to have the videos too, so that's pretty, pretty good, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that definitely adds to, to our, our competency and allows, you know, not just the dispatch, but, you know, all of the, the ones that, that are being dispatched, um, to a scene, that's a, um, I, I see that as a huge, uh, benefit and then of course once people start getting more comfortable or there's awareness that they have that, um, which I think we'll have to focus on that. We need to make sure that we, uh, bring awareness to it and let everybody know that they have that as a tool.
Yes, definitely.
They all be there with your puppets.
Your cell phone's Ali.
Yeah.
Is there also associated with this?
Sir?
Is there a cost associated with this?
No sir, there is not a cost to this. The COG has been very generous to help work with us on this as well and Anita has been heavily involved in it. Uh, she has really done a lot of time and, and work into it, so part of the, uh, testing, perk, I guess you could say, i- is that we get the software in here and can use it.
Yeah, she's got money allocated for things like that, so, and we're, we're very lucky with the COG that Anita, who's there, we don't want her to retire either because she's known nationwide for, uh, 911 directors, she's kind of really respected nationwide, so that shows how we get these things as well.
Yes, she's been a crucial part of this to help us out.
Yes.
Great. I do want to say that is a great thing that's happening there. I do want to say that is a great thing that's happening there, just getting better all the time. Good people there. Thank you.
And that's all I have.
All right.
Kristi, have you anything else to present this morning?
No, sir, that's it.
Well, thank you so much for your report, and thanks for the heads up on the Motorola projects.
Yeah, we'll be looking forward to that.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number 10, presentation of the IT Department's monthly report. Mr. Harris?
Judge Commissioners, good morning. Just wanted to, I'll go through this relatively quickly. There's a lot of information to cover. First and foremost, we continue to have 35 projects. A couple of project states have changed. Specifically, we've had to delay a couple of projects and actually adjust the end time, and I'll get into that when I give you the updates. Network redesign, this is probably our largest project that will consume the majority of the year. This project really kicks off with the new road and bridge facility. We built that network on our test lab, and we're ready to actually deploy it. It's my understanding that we're still on target for substantial completion handoff on the 27th of this month, and then we can get in there and start putting some equipment in and start actually building that network. Our target is to have a go-live date of 5:15 or the mid of May, and that will allow us to stay on track for the completion of the network redesign for 12:31, so the end of this year. One of our projects that we had to delay was the Cisco SourceFire IPS. We're currently down a staff member, and this was one of the projects that the staff member and I were working on, so I've pushed this back. Ultimately, the IPS is configured. It's an intrusion prevention system. It's been configured for several months, collecting data. Now we actually need to turn it on. Most of that time is taken up by just communicating with people that it's on, and then if they get indications when they go to websites or try to access information, and it comes up and it says you're not allowed to do that, that they're prepared for that, that they understand. So my desire is to try to have this completed or turned on, which basically means moving the intrusion prevention system out of audit mode on or before the 1st of May. Digital signage, digital signage initiative is actually to deploy digital signage throughout the county, and this will also start at the new road and bridge facility. We currently have the digital signage players, and we're in the process of developing the content for these signs. As you walk into the new road and bridge facility, there will be two TVs, one on the left and one on the right, and they will be digital signs, and initially, they'll have the same content on them, but they will have the ability to have additional content. This will actually act as the testbed and the example for the county's digital signage initiative that we hope to be able to spread throughout all of our facilities, specifically the courthouse, so we can have wayfinding and information as to the location of different services and what have you. We've had a couple of projects that have been sitting with a vendor. The projects were approved many months ago, and the vendor had come back and it said that it was gonna cost more money, so we made the decision. Standby, please. I'm sorry. I was just getting some background noise. We made the decision to bring those projects in-house. The first project, I've adjusted the end date. It's the Active Directory Connect. What this allows us to do is have the same username and password that we do to log onto the network also with our email, and that will actually be able to manage in-house, and I've adjusted the end date to June 1st. The single sign-on project was coupled with this because we have to get the AD Connect set up first before we do single sign-on. We still, I believe, we're gonna be doing this in-house. I still believe we'll make a 7-1 deadline, but I'm, you know, I'm not exactly sure everything that entails and everything, so I may come back next month and say I'm gonna push that back a little bit. One of the bigger projects that we've been working on are the fax and analog line consolidations, primarily because we're trying to get cost savings this year, and then get a substantial amount of cost savings for the years to come. Unfortunately, our service provider, AT&amp;T, has not been able to deliver in a timely fashion the number porting, which basically means moving those numbers from their existing location that we get charged on a per-line basis into our telephone system. They finally started doing it, but it's literally, I made the request in February, and the first one was a test, and it still hasn't come to fruition. So admittedly, I'm very frustrated, and one of the reasons why we want to do this project is so we're not so heavily reliant upon AT&amp;T, because frankly, the carrier continues to be a disappointment. And then I've also had to delay the Strategic Alliance. This is primarily due, this project is to create an alliance amongst the IT organizations throughout community partnerships, specifically the city, ISD, et cetera. But as we're all aware, as a result of the crisis, a lot of those folks that are going to be part of this are engaged in supporting their particular initiatives for the crisis, so I've made the decision to kind of push this back. My hope is that we can get this back on track by the beginning of June. And I'm just gonna go through the projects real quick, the project list.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Basically a comment, not a question. I think this coalition that you're creating through these other IT members would be beneficial in the future in situations just like what because you guys being able to communicate a message through technology. I mean, you guys have really stepped up. We're doing Zoom meetings for Commissioner's Board at this point because of the situation, and IT plays a very intimate role in that, and I appreciate the effort that's been put, placed forward to make this happen, because we still need to do the business of the county, and this allows us to do that. And so I understand this, this is something that has to be pushed back at this point, but I think in the future, it will be a great benefit to have that group communicating and coordinating throughout the county and the region.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. I agree. This was Commissioner Bullock's brainchild. It's a wonderful idea. Biggest thing, just to kind of keep, put things in perspective, is sharing resources, sharing knowledge base, and being able to, you know, leverage that. And so, for example, with the city, they do a lot of fiber work. They're gonna be training us on terminating fiber, so we can do some of that stuff, and utilizing the tools. The city has a fusion splicer. The ISD has a different type of splicer, and then we can use the tools, so no one organization has to have a substantial capital expenditure. Nothing specific to discuss with regard to the CISA tickets. It's pretty standard, with one exception, and this is our mean time to repair. You may remember the last several months, I've been talking about our desires to get this to aid. We've had some reconfigurations that we had to do with regard to our the the actual reporting and what have you, and now this is the most current report. It actually shows 12.6. You'll notice there's some anomalous indications here, 94.4, 26.2, 58.9. As these drop off, that number will be actually in line with where it should be. It's ultimately just a reporting error, and it's because of the configuration of the system. We've since corrected that, which basically means, obviously, from the responses that we're getting from our customers, they're pleased with the service, but that really means that the real mean time to repair really is closer to the eight-hour mark, which is what we're targeting. This is network status by location. Nothing to report there. Sorry, jumped down. Right now, current budget expense or expenditures is 24.3%. It's actually less than it should be. Our burn rate should be about 37.5% at this time, so we're actually performing pretty well. Part of that also is because we're also down a staff member. Currently have a vacant position. We've, we actually opened that vacant position, and we've been collecting resumes. We've gotten very low response and even lower qualified candidates, so I'm a little bit disappointed with that, but it were, I think part of it is the crisis that we're experiencing right now. And then finally, there are no network outages or downtimes to report. That is my report.
I know the other day I was in HR when you were talking about the, for the executive time, that y'all figured out the problems there?
Yes, ma'am. So, and Joy, I don't know if you've seen the Commissioner Fox, I'm not sure if you've seen the last email that came out, but they've actually, they're trying to set up some time with everybody to kind of go over it, so they know for certain that executive time and encode are speaking. They ported all of the information, so they're basically got a shared database with the users and what have you. So ultimately, they're ready to start teaching us and rolling out this capability, specifically the electronic time cards.
Good, good. I like, I just happened to be in there when you were talking to Daryl about it, so I just wanted to bring that up, because I know y'all, y'all work together with all the different people at Tyler, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, we're very fortunate. Our project manager got all of the parties on their end and all the parties on our end together, and that was really what allowed us to make the breakthrough that we needed to do.
That's good. Thank you. Thanks for getting that done.
TJ, before we move on, of course, I know I say this all the time, but just for everybody else to know, basically, I'll echo the same sentiment that I made regarding Kevin Duramus. We are so fortunate to have TJ, to have Mr. Harris as our IT Director. Not only has he, the time that he joined the county in September, has he done amazing things, but on top of what y'all, sorry, there goes my camera again. You know, you've been equally instrumental in helping everyone at the county, and Kevin, and the JIC and everything, in keeping us up and running and quickly solving problems during this crisis. So I just, I want to formally, on the record, thank you for that. We're very fortunate to have you.
Yeah, I'll agree with that, because the Joint Information Center was brought together really quickly, and that shows, you know, it's amazing. Sometimes, you know, we don't work together with other entities. It's just different reasons, but it took a virus like this to show us that we all work together better. And this has shown us that definitely 100%, that if we work together as a team and all of us work together, then we can get things done and take care of our people. I appreciate your, your department taking care of getting those things together and getting them up and running along with the Zoom things that I'm not crazy about, but we're doing it, so.
Commissioner Fox, real quickly, I'd just like to mention how much I appreciate the partnerships that we have with the city and with the ISD. We're very fortunate to have such a good group of people working in information technology throughout, and I hope to be able to continue that relationship, because there's some stellar folks.
Yes, we have a lot of good people working around here, so it's good.
TJ, I just want to say, what I see of you and being in charge of IT before as a liaison, there's a night and day difference, and I just want to say that, and you're doing such a great job, and this virus is terrible, but I think it brought everybody together, and it makes it a lot better for everything here, even though that's a bad thing, but it did help us to, I think, come together, and we have a great, great deal going on here. Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Okay, any other comments or questions for Mr. Harris? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Thank you for your report. Item number 11, presentation of the Veteran Service Officers' Monthly Report. Mr. Cern, are you on the meeting?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
For the month of March, we had 211 email and face-to-face contacts and 50 forms completed on behalf of veterans and their dependents. A little bit about the impact of the virus. There was, well, there was little impact on that for the, for the month of March, but but for this month that we're in right now, we're seeing a pretty substantial impact to our constituents. Really no impact to services there. Everything's up and running despite a lot of folks at the VA and Texas Veterans Commission not being in the office but working from home. Things are still happening benefits-wise and healthcare-wise. The VA is up and running. As far as flags folded and presented to veterans, those were to Robert Conway, Annie Schultz, Harold Lanford, and Elwood Overman. Pending your questions, Judge and Commissioners.
Is, I just wanted to ask you real quick, you had mentioned, you know, that you're starting to see an impact. Is there anything that we can do? Is there anything that IT can do? Because obviously, I mean, I would imagine that, are you having a lot of people that are apprehensive to come face-to-face? I mean, is there anything that we can do to help you meet the needs of those veterans that we're not doing right now?
Well, ma'am, our phone number is out there, and folks always call in before they come into the office anyway. And we do, we have been doing quite a bit of business just over the phone and on digits, but a lot of folks feel fairly comfortable, because a lot of what we do is sensitive, and so a lot of folks are fairly comfortable in a face-to-face meeting versus over the phone or some other device.
Okay.
But I don't think, you know, that's a good question. That's a very good question. What else can we do? And that's a very good way to be, as far as always thinking, what else can we do for veterans and our constituents? And, you know, I'll continue to think about that, ma'am.
Yeah, think about that, and if there's anything that the court can do to assist you, or if there's anything that IT can do, because obviously, we're having to rely on IT a lot through this time. If there's anything that we can do, you just need to holler and let us know.
I will do that, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Eric.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Cern?
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate you. Thank your report.
Yes, sir. Appreciate y'all too.
Okay. All right. Item number 12, presentation of the Road and Bridge Department's Monthly Report. Mr. McColl?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
TJ, I'm gonna steal the screen real quick.
Good.
Okay, can y'all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
We can.
Okay. And just for the benefit of any resident that's watching, planning on getting with IT and trying to either place this on our website or get this printed publicly for reference, but we're gonna go through here real quick. Commissioners, I know I've had a long meeting. There's a lot going on. We'll hit on some of the high points for your Road and Bridge Department. Again, this report doesn't cover all of our projects. The report would be probably 100 pages or more, but these are the the bigger items that we're addressing and where the resources are right now, and then a look forward. This first page, I just want to hit on this. This is kind of a snapshot of the department as a whole. What we've done, just to kind of reiterate previous conversation, the Road and Bridge districts, we've divided the county into 17 different areas. That's in an effort to ensure that we're covering the whole geographic area of the county fully and completely, and we're accountable for all of our resources to all of the constituents from one side to the other. What we have here is just a chart showing the completed work orders. I will tell you that over the past month, I've been running it about two-thirds of our staff. Reason for that is we were going through the process of hiring equipment operators, as well as having employees take time off, sick time, and vacation time, and things like that. Some of it was related to COVID time, but I will tell you that none of my employees are showing any signs or have had any issues with that, but out of precaution, taking proper precautions, some of them have taken time off. Some of them have chosen to take their vacation time instead. So we are running, we were running short with our staff. Now, I'll tell you that we've hired four more operators with varying degrees of experience, from five, 10 of experience, from five, 10 years of road building experience all the way up to 17. So we are running almost completely fully staffed. We've got two more positions available, but we're monitoring kind of our employees at this point. I will tell you, this next month, over the Easter weekend, we had roughly 43 trees that came down that weekend, had two crews out picking up trees, getting them off the road. And so I would expect in April, a lot of the requests that we fulfill will be related to trees and brush. So just kind of looking forward to this month. I've outlined our four monthly priorities for the department. Again, we're assisting EMS with driveway and helipad for the new helicopter project. We are finishing that, likely be tomorrow. It is pretty much done, but we're going to be improving some, adding some surface treatments to the helipad to ensure that it's, won't damage any equipment. Number two, the CTIF, the grant application. Again, this is the oil and gas grant that we're going out for. We met yesterday with Commissioner Fox, Grant Works, and the engineer that's going to assist us with this project. There's roughly $570,000 in construction funds that we're applying for. There's, I am hopeful and optimistic that we will be awarded some, if not all of that. We have roads picked out. I will tell you that previously, and I'll mention this again, Old Mill Creek and Hoan Wally School Road are two of the top priorities in that grant application. There are some other roads that we're going to include, but I want to hold off and see what those cost estimates come back in at for Old Mill Creek and Hoan Wally, and then we'll continue to add other projects as well. We want to submit as many as we can. We want to be responsible with our requests, but at the same time, we want to take advantage of any opportunities. Third, third priority, prepare roads and coordinate contract work for second course reseal. If you remember, last year, we had roughly 35 to 40 miles of road that we sealed. A lot of it was with one course of treatment, chip seal. This year, we need to go back with a second course. I did that to cover more area sooner, to hopefully prevent issues with road degradation. So this year, we need to go back with a second course. I'll get to those roads here in a minute. And then finally, we need to prepare for our office and equipment for the May move to the new location. Things that we have to do, we have to monitor our rock and asphalt, the oil usage. We're trying to use all that up that we have in storage so that when we relocate our tanks, we don't have an issue. And we're trying to consolidate our files, go through old documents, you know, try to get everything organized for that move. Any questions or comments about overall kind of view of last month?
None here.
Real quickly, Precinct 1, this is a snapshot, Precinct 1, no big issues. We completed Little Rocky Road as a level-up project. We still have the bridge on Felder Road that we're looking at. And again, there's the agreement for a culvert extension on Stonefield land that is at the County Attorney's Office for review. Precinct 2, the big issue for Precinct 2 is Chadwick-Hogan Bridge. I will tell you that for a time, the contractor was anxious about the pandemic. They had mobilized, they had pulled off of the job for roughly two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
And we had, Road and Bridge has stayed in constant communication with them to try to come up with a firm schedule because we had torn the old bridge, the old structure down, removed all the old material, and we were just waiting on the contractor to mobilize back out there and get it finished. I will tell you, yesterday, they came out, they are preparing the substructure for the bridge, so that is moving forward. I'm hopeful that we still have a May 2020 delivery. It might actually bump back a few weeks based on them pulling off the job, but we are moving forward with that. That is the top priority, I will tell you, for Precinct 2 at this time. Working on a storm sewer project in Gunnanrod that is moving forward. Met with a contractor on that. We've got different proposals for that, so that project is still moving forward. Precinct 3, we finished Thomason Creek Asphalt Level-Up Project. I do want to bring to your attention again, Road District 10 Drainage. I've got it highlighted as 11 work orders. The reason for this is we had issues with our grade-all. The grade-all is the equipment that cleans out ditches, that sets culverts. We had some, a breakdown, and so we had to get that fixed. That pushed us back on drainage, not just for Precinct 3, but the county as a whole. So that has been fixed, and we are moving forward with addressing those outstanding work orders. And finally, Precinct 4, again, there's pavement issues south of Burton, kind of the southwestern corner of the county. Again, a lot of that is oil and gas-related issues. We do have a plan in place, not just the grant application, but we do have plans to address those areas. The plans won't be patching by hand, but we have other ways to cover larger areas of damaged roads. So that is in progress. And then finally, in Precinct 4, we've worked with City of Burton at the request of Commissioner Fox. We've prepared some cost estimates to help them out with some of their roads. Again, those project scopes are being finalized with the mayor, between the mayor and Commissioner Fox. And once those are decided, then that would need to come to Commissioners' Court for consideration, but we have done some work for the City of Burton, preparing those documents to help them make an informed decision. Few other projects that are in our queue. Again, I'll just reiterate, Old Mill Creek and Hoan Wally School Road, those are the two priority projects and TIF grant application. Grant applications are being accepted April 27 till May 27. Our goal after our meeting yesterday is to get all of our information in by May 1. So that's a pretty aggressive schedule on our end, but I want to make sure we get it in in time. Real quick, I just want to hit on this. This has kind of been really one of my top priorities for our GIS personnel. This is, this project is in response to Commissioners, citizens asking me, what are we going to pave next year? What's our plan? Well, our plan is, I have to know what we have before I can tell you how we're going to allocate resources. So these are the roads. We've driven all of these roads. The different colors indicate different road conditions. So at the end of this project, we'll have a complete map of all of the roads that are county-maintained, and I can tell you, I could zoom in and say, if it's red, that would indicate bad. Green would be better. Yellow is kind of in the middle. But I could zoom in, and this is Old Mill Creek, Old Mill Creek and Hoan Wally School Road. I could zoom in and show you, well, it's red, so that's a bad area. We need to look at a rehab. We need to plan for a rehab. Then we can come up with cost estimates based on the mileage. We can come up with cost estimates based on the condition and plan. This road condition and mapping is going to be an ongoing process, and so it's going to be a living document that we evaluate the road conditions continually. And so as we do road projects, we'll update this. It'll be a planning and budgeting tool.
Very good.
I'm just going to run through here real quick. Some of these we've already talked about. Equipment tracking. My operators don't like me because I track them everywhere they go. Have that. We purchased our front-end loader this past month. It's got a scale on the bucket, so we're using it to help improve our inventory process. And then finally, FEMA reimbursement. We started getting money from the May 2016 storm. Four years, yes. It's taken four years, and the administrative staff has continued to move forward with the request. Debbie, Catherine, and Vincent, working diligently and hard with FEMA to get them the information they need. They would ask us questions. We'd get them the documentation time and time again. They would ask new questions and require different things. Time and time again, the road and bridge administrative staff has handled this. We're starting to see that money trickle in. So roughly over half a million this quarter with, expected to be 1.4 million overall. So that's coming in. That's a good thing.
Just to put aside now on that, Ross, if you don't mind me saying this, to let people know that are listening, that are the public, that this is replacing the money we've respent on these roads. We've respent, we have spent this ahead of time, and then we get the money to replace it. So just to put that out there.
Great. These are the road reseal projects I spoke about earlier. My two crews that I have working on road, roadwork, I've given them lists of these, and so they are out there working, prepping the roads for a second seal on these roads. William Penn Gas Camp and that whole list. We are finalizing our remaining projects this year. Whenever we get that complete, that will be released to the public. But again, my focus has been collecting the inventory under this GIS project. I've got to know what we have in order to make decisions on budget, and we want to be fair and thorough across the whole county. So that said, let's see, I think that is it. Moved to the new facility, expected during the week of May 11. Like TJ was saying, 5:15 was kind of the complete move-in. Substantial completion is slated for 4:27. We've had several inspections in the past week or so, coming up with punch list items. The project is finishing up. It is looking good, and it is something that I think the citizens will be proud of, an investment for years to come. If there's any questions, Commissioners, Judge, happy to have it answered.
Thanks, Ross, for all you're doing there. I do see a great improvement since you've been here. It's wonderful to have you. Appreciate you.
And just to let people also know, I want to thank you guys for being out there on the road. And the brush cutter is something we do all over the county to keep the roads from being overgrown, the roads where people can't drive through and stuff. So we're in my precinct right now, in Precinct 4, so just so everybody knows that the brush cutter's coming your way. We'll do it on every road that needs it because people can't get through their cars if the trees overtake the roads. So that's something that is a needed thing to do.
That's correct.
Ross, I started saying something earlier and realized that I was muted, but again, you know, just want to thank you as well. I know it's been kind of hard, I feel like, for the constituency to really see what you, what you had to take on when you came on as county engineer and all the improvements, but I think that we're getting to a point where the constituency is going to slowly start to really get to a better idea of what you've been doing, and thank you for all the hard work that you've, that you've put into the department in restructuring and all of that. So thank you.
I just want to say thank you for this nice report, that we're so well-informed in what you are doing and accomplishments along the way. A lot, a lot of work here, and I say thank you very much for it.
Yes.
Are there any other comments for Mr. McCall? Thank you, Ms. McCall. Thank you for your report.
Thanks, sir.
Item number 13, Discuss and act upon approving pay application number 14 to call your construction for the Road and Bridge facility. Commissioners, I'll have this in your packet today. It says pay app number 14, an amount of $387,018.33.
I make a motion to approve the pay application number 14 to call your construction for the Road and Bridge facility.
I'll second that.
Then made and seconded. Commissioner Hannett made the motion. Commissioner Fox seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I would just say, Judge, I think that from now on, when we deal with Road and Bridge on the agenda, we utilize the new name that the Commissioners' Court voted on, which is Engineering and Development Services.
Good suggestion. Thank you. We can take that into consideration. And Mr. McCall, when you submit anything from that, you know, you have your reports and so forth, they'll bend to your will and the new name that we voted on last week. So we all need to get used to that. So, okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, Discuss and act upon a subdivision variance request for Lot 2A in the first rental number one subdivision located in the A0189 Livingston-Wilkinson League in Precinct 3. Commissioner Hannett?
Commissioners, you have this in your packet. I'm certain that you've had time to visit with Mr. McCall and Mr. Marzon. This is a subdivision variance request, and I think that, I'm sure you've read the document that's in your packet. That document was prepared by Mr. Grant Schick from HODI Surveying. It's an engineering request. There are some concerns about, from Washington, however, I would, I would preface that with the fact that this is a variance request from our rules, not TCQ rules.
Right. I'll just put my two cents in. I mean, I've had several conversations, and to be quite honest, I've kind of gone back and forth on how I feel about this, and typically I would say that we shouldn't give any concessions outside of the rules that we have set, which in this regard. But however, knowing that they're short, one tenth of an acre, but yet it still meets TCQ's requirements and has, not prematurely, but on the, has been reviewed and pre-approved by an engineer at this point. And more notable, the fact that we're in the middle of a coronavirus, and I don't want to further burden any constituent with something that we can control. And in this regard, I'm willing to lean outside of those rules in this circumstance. But, you know, by no means, it is kind of scary saying that because I don't want us to set a precedent. We obviously have rules, and we got to, we got to draw the line somewhere, but in this circumstance, I'm willing to bend.
Are there any other comments?
Well, I've talked to Ross, and I've talked to Commissioner Hannett also about this, and I know I've had some previous ones with similar requests that we've denied. I understand the special circumstances with this one. It's only a tenth of an acre. Um, I understand the special circumstances with this one. It's only a tenth of an acre. Um, I, I know there's, there's, there's things that the reason why they wanted to do this, and it's not a permanent, from what I understand, it's not going to be a permanent residence there. Um, just do have some concerns, as, as Commissioner Bullock said, about setting a precedent, because we've had history of other things that we have denied on certain things like this. But, um, I'm, I've been going back and forth in my mind too about this and trying to figure out the best thing to do, because, um, we, if, if we're going to change our rules, then we'd probably need to change our whole subdivision rulebook and work on that again, because it was done. Uh, Mr. Hody helped us to write the subdivision manual that we have, have now. And like I said, I know we got Mr. Litska in here to look at it and stuff, but it's just something that, um, rules are rules, but I don't know. That's just my two cents.
For me, it was more so the coronavirus and just knowing that people are already being affected by it. And, um, so I hate to, I don't want this to, I'm probably going to get hammered for saying this, but I don't know the better way to say it, but, I mean, for, for, for Mr. Brown, I mean, as it relates to, to my vote, um, it's probably the only thing that someone can be thankful for as it relates to the coronavirus, because it's, um, increased, um, the, the, the financial sentiment, if, if that makes sense, for, for, for lack of not knowing how to word that. But, uh, if, if, I, I can tell you, it would have been a much, much harder decision for me had we not been in the current crisis.
Is there a motion?
I think, I think that, uh, it's all okay since the engineer looked at it and said it, it will pass. I mean, the subject system, I know we're bending the rules a little bit, but I think we need to take in consideration the situation. So I'm, I'll probably support this. I think it's a good thing that we do it.
Further discussion we need to have in motion?
I make a motion to approve the variance request for lot two A in the first of Brenham number one subdivision located in the A throw one eight nine Living, Livingston-Wilkinson League precinct three.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Hannett, seconded by Commissioner Kester. Now, is there any further discussion? No further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And that aye was from, excuse me?
Commissioner Fox.
Commissioner.
I just have to go by my principles and my people.
Exactly. I just want to make clear clarification, so we have.
Nothing against Browns or anything, just, um, on history.
Okay, the motion is, uh, is, the ayes have, it is approved. Okay, item number fifteen is fairgrounds. There are no fairgrounds contracts at this time. Uh, item number sixteen, discuss and act upon approval of counts payable. Any discussion about counts payable?
Peggy, do you want to comment? Is she on?
She was. Unmute Peggy.
First, is there a motion?
There she goes. Hi Peggy.
Hello. Uh, do y'all have any questions? I, I think y'all see that we did the annual EMS transfer, the funds, and, and, um, there's payments for the elevator and the aviation subscription thing. So lots of things in there that are unique, but a lot of it is normal stuff.
All right. I'll move upon the approval of accounts payable.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Kester, seconded by Commissioner Fox. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we're going to interject a time for public comments. It would be remiss in not having that at the beginning of our meeting. Anyone on, in the public that would like to make a comment at this time? Anyone in the public would like to make a comment at this time? TJ, you have unmuted, I hope, right?
Everybody, everybody has the ability to unmute themselves, Judge.
Okay, fine. I just want to make sure that we don't have a problem there. Being no comments from the public, we'll move on to item number seventeen.
I make a motion during this meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Fox, seconded by Commissioner Kester to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.